If you remember in ten years, I have never asked a single individual in Martinsville in Henry County on the air for anything. As a matter of fact, the churches of Christ in this area have given out concordances. I don't know how many thousand dollars worth of concordances. We give you on our broadcast here, an average of three to four thousand dollars call time. Not another broadcast station anywhere, our broadcast show anywhere allows you to call in and talk back. We don't ask for praise reports. We don't ask you to tell us how good we're doing. We allow you to talk back. We allow the preachers to get on and try to refute what we're saying. What does the Bible say is on? Call a friend and tell them. Tonight we have a very interesting broadcast. Want to let you know that if you want to get in touch with me, BibleSays81@hotmail.com. That's my email. Local phone call, two seven six eight oh six twenty one fifty. Friends, it may be the case that you're wondering, what is our agenda? Our agenda is a very kind and generous thing. We have good motives. Our hearts are pure. We don't ask you for money. We're not really asking you to come where we are. We're asking you to go back to your pastor and ask him why he's not teaching what the Bible says. Why has he got you in that denomination that's not in the Bible? The Bible says Romans 10 17, "So then faith cometh by hearing, hearing by the word of God." If faith comes by hearing the word of God, why do you believe a denomination and it's not in God's word? You shouldn't believe in a denomination when it's not in God's word. Go back and ask your pastor. You see, what I'm trying to do is get the church you're in to become the Lord's church, not the Baptist church, the Methodist church, the Presbyterian Episcopalians, Seventh Day Adventist Jehovah's Witness Mormon, and on and on and on. Church of God nomination like Mercy Crossing, full gospel denomination, Pentecostal denomination, holiness denomination, all these denominations, false doctrine, no reason whatsoever to believe that Jesus wanted them because He never spoke of them. You see, my motives are pure. I don't want you necessarily to have to come where I am. I would like to be able to come where you are and be like 1 Corinthians, chapter four, verse seventeen. Paul said he could go and preach in every church. I'd like to attend with you. I'd like to be in fellowship with you, but I can't because you're teaching things that are not in the Bible. And the Bible says, "Any man does not consent to the wholesome words, even the doctrine of Jesus Christ, withdraw from that person." 1 Timothy, chapter six, verse three. It's 1 Timothy, chapter six, verse five. You see, if you won't consent to the words of Jesus, you're not Jesus disciple. Luke six forty six, "Why call you me Lord and do not the things which I say?" If you're in a denomination, Jesus didn't say that. Jesus wants all of His people to be together, to believe one thing, to have one kind of doctrine, so we can all worship together. Denominationalism, y'all, is division. And so my motives are pure. My motives are good. I am simply trying to help the situation. And look at this, proverb twenty three, twenty two, verse three says to you, "A prudent man foreseeeth evil." You know what is evil? Evil is when you don't do what God says. You remember Cain? 1 John three twelve says Cain was evil. His deeds were evil. Why? Well, the Bible says in Hebrews eleven four, "That Abel operated by faith. He offered by faith." Well, when you offer by faith, it means you heard God say to do it. But see Cain, he offered something God didn't say to do, and the Bible says his deeds were evil. Y'all, if you're in a denomination, that's evil. It is actually substituting a man-made institution for the church that Jesus paid for with His blood. There's no preacher that can argue this with me. There's no preacher that can answer this in Martinsville and Henry County. All they can do is get mad and say, "Oh, it made no difference." You see, I'm pure. And if you're prudent, you will see evil and hide yourself from it. But the simple pass on and are punished. My friends, please don't be simple. I'm trying to help us, not to be simple. There are a lot of simple people in Martinsville and Henry County. They just will not be helped and they're going to be punished. Jesus said in Matthew seven, twenty and twenty one, "Not everyone that says to me, Lord, Lord, shall enter the kingdom of heaven, but he that doth the will of my Father, which is in heaven." You cannot get the will of God to get you in a denomination to save your soul. Just won't do it. Now, if you remain in that, you're going to be punished. That's just all there is. And I'm trying to help you. It divides up people. It allows them to all claim that we worship God and we love God, but we're all doing conflict and contrary things and spending millions of dollars to keep ourselves apart, not getting together. I'll discuss with any preacher in town. I'll work on these doctrinal issues. I go over to Jackie Poe's place every now and then, go up in there, nice, try to talk with him. Generally, these folks get aggravated and agitated and want to raise their voice. See, friends, we're trying to help and we want you to see that this [inaudible]. And so what I have to do is I have to point out in denominationalism, the things that are not scriptural. Now someone's saying, "Well, we don't like that." Now let me tell you this, if you're a Baptist, your preacher has pointed out to you over and over and over that the Methodists are wrong for sprinkling. And that's how come you don't worship with the Methodists, because it is absolutely in your mind, unbiblical, unscriptural to substitute sprinkling for immersion. I agree, because that's what the Bible says. Well, you see, he pointed out why the Methodists are wrong, and that's why you don't worship with the Methodists. And they have women preachers. That's why you don't do it. Now, if he is saying that I'm bad for pointing out your error, you need to go tell him that y'all all need to open up the door, take the sign down, or put a sign up that says Methodist and Baptist, so you can all be together and you can be consistent. Now, if you don't do that, you need to be quiet about me pointing out error, because I'm doing the same thing that all of y'all are doing. Every one of you are apart from the other denominations because of some error that they're doing that you don't like. Baptists and Presbyterians are disagreeing on the kind of leadership organization. They have a Presbyterian leadership. Episcopalians, that is a title that describes their organizational leadership. Episcopalians, Presbyterian. The Methodists have a particular system, and it was built by John Wesley. The Baptists have another. See, you're all different because you cannot agree and you actually pick and point about the error of the other, and you build yourself a million dollar building and stay away from them. So see, you're just like me, except that I have the truth. I'm pointing out the error in all of y'all, and I'm pleading with you to demonstrate where I'm in error. If you can show me that I'm in error, you're the best friend I've got. And Paul said in Galatians four sixteen, "Why should you be my enemy if I tell you the truth?" See, that's childish behavior. So see what we're trying to do tonight? We're trying to show the simple. Romans, chapter six, verse sixteen, verse seventeen. Now, y'all, we just hit Martinsville head on right here. "Now I beseech you brethren, mark them." That word "mark" is the word "skopeo" in the Greek. What does that sound like? Scope, scope them out. That's exactly what it means. Scope that person out which causes division and offenses contrary to the doctrine which you have learned, and avoid them. You see how the Bible talks about persons who will teach division, who will teach things that are contrary to the doctrine? You see, friend, when you look at doctrine in the New Testament, it's always "the," singular. There were no such thing as doctrines that were satisfactory to Jesus Christ. No such thing. You just check it out. I challenge you to find doctrines in the Bible and it be pleasing to Jesus. Doctrines was always, when it had an S on it, comes from the devil. Doctrines of demons, he actually says, I believe in 2 Timothy, 1 Timothy, chapter four. Doctrines, doctrines plural. We have a singular doctrine, and if you cause offenses contrary to the doctrine, the doctrine of Jesus Christ says that a woman cannot preach. Now, if you teach different than that, you've tried to bring in another doctrine which would make it doctrines. A doctrine for the Baptists and a doctrine for the holiness, that's doctrines. Won't work. And the Baptists say no too, and I'm glad they do. You see, anybody who teaches anything that causes division and offenses contrary to the doctrine, y'all, the doctrine says there should be one church. We all should be together. If you teach that we can divide up into our different religions, then you have just caused offenses contrary to the doctrine which you have learned or should have learned, and we have to avoid you. Now, "They that are such..." Now, you know, a lot of people get aggravated with me because I tell it like it is, but you know, this is Bible, y'all. Anybody who teaches that division is okay and you can do all this, here's what you are. This is what the Bible says. "For they that are such serve not the Lord Jesus Christ, but their own belly, and by good words and fair speeches deceive the hearts of who? The simple." See, friends, here's what we're doing. We're trying to help you. We're trying to help you to see that these folks run around here in these Rolls Royces, these Bentleys, and these Jaguars and all that stuff, seven, eight cars in the name of Jesus. Who they serving? Their belly, can't you see it? And you're too simple to see it. Now, friends, being simple is not a crime, and it's not something that's really bad if you get to see through it. But if you stay simple, guess what? If you stay simple, you're going to be punished. I don't want you to be punished. I love you. Why else do you think I put up with all this? Why I put up with people who threaten me and try to get me off the air and try to get our brethren off the air and all the different stuff we put up with? Why do you think we put up with that? And then I don't get paid. I don't get money from you. See, I'm not asking you for money. And I'm driving around in a car that's ten years old, older than ten years old. Why do I...
Okay, good evening, everybody. This is what does the Bible say. My name is Caleb Robertson. I am a Christian. I'm a member of the Body of Christ. I assemble with the brethren in Martinsville, Virginia. We meet at eight twenty-three Starling Avenue, Sunday mornings at ten and eleven a.m. And tonight, if you're watching on Star News and you're in the area, we would like for you to come visit with us. If you're in the relatively close area and you're watching on YouTube, we would like for you to come visit with us. And we've got people from different places, folk from Reedsville are making the drive over to come visit with us and just in Eden, also a number of places. This is a religious broadcast, and we're going to get right into it tonight. I was out of town for the greater part of the month of December, and so there were some local events that I missed, and tonight I want to come in and give some religious commentary on them if I can. We just had in November, we had city council elections, and we've had new people come in, some people go out. But I want to do this, I want to talk about two things. Let me put it up here. Politics gets very ugly very quickly. And as you can see down here, not the only, up here, this is city council, not the only politics happening in Martinsville, are pastors overreaching. Now, this is what I want to do tonight. I want to talk about the politics first, then I want to get into religion, and then I'm going to close out with Greg Hodges. Greg, nothing personal, but he's going to be the closer. Greg Hodges is the pastor over at Stanley Town's Amazing Grace Independent Baptist Sect, and he's also the president of local community college. But he'll be our closer. So tonight, that's what we're doing. Politics first, city council, then religion, and then we're going to close with Greg Hodges. Now, let me do this. Here's the thing, you know, right away, I understand, this is my Bible, the broadcast is called, "What Does the Bible Say?" This is where someone says, "Well, you shouldn't, you're a preacher, you shouldn't be talking about this stuff." How did we get that? And I come on, I just don't have it with me tonight. I don't have the Enterprise, Henry County Enterprise. You know, you preach with the Bible in one hand and the newspaper in the other. I'm a citizen. I live in Martinsville. These people are my neighbors. So I am a part of the conversation as much as anybody else. Now, as we get going into it, let me just do this really, really quickly. You can see what does the Bible say while we are on Star News. You can also see what does the Bible say anywhere on any smart device that can access YouTube. All you have to put in is Google, YouTube, Johnny Robertson, all this will come up. This is my phone number, two seven six eight oh six three six four one. My email address is Caleb G. Robertson at gmail dot com. You can contact me at those places. Now, I want to open up with a lengthy clip. Now, I want to just start out with this. This is a city council meeting that I think happened on December seventeenth. I might have those dates wrong. This is, he was not up for election. He's already served on city council for two years. His name is Aaron Rawls, and local people know who he is, and people are upset with different people. But in the last city council meeting that they had in the year two thousand twenty-four, he went out and he blasted everybody. And I'm going to play him sped up just a little bit for time's sake. Here we go.
Susan, I feel yours. I appreciate the shout out. I'm going to make sure to let Lacey know I'm not racist. Appreciate that, and also my baby. Look, if you're going to do this job, and I hate it this way, you're going to deal with this [inaudible] period, point blank, in a conversation. I'm surrounded by some. I just am. We saw ridiculous, absurd lies on people who are in public office, who are not in public office, lying on random organizations, some of them with employees who work for state agencies, and that's all the chatter up there as well. Can't really trust people in that city because they'll lie on anybody to get God knows what, what the agenda is. Heck, if I know, I have no clue. Doesn't seem a whole lot's changed in the executive sessions despite all this ridiculous rhetoric. And now, to be quite frank, probably walking into the worst council we've had in history. And it was pretty darn bad before I got on here. So I'm going to do my absolute best to protect the citizens as best I can. Jessica, the Enterprise, you've already heard a lot of this from me. It's not a statement I provided to you with any sort of malice or anger. It's just things are what they are. We are backtracking to Tammy's point. We are backtracking hard. We went from a spot of where people who want to help Martinsville, and God help me, people from outside of Martinsville want to help Martinsville more than Martinsville does. And I go and try to capitalize on that with other people who believe in this community, and they look at me and say, "Finally, we think maybe you guys are going to turn the corner." Nope. Psych. Look at these last few months, worse than ever. You won't have anybody come to put a competitive grant in our hands in the next couple of years, I promise you that. Race hustling away, throw it in the trash because somebody gets mad at some other person. We ruined someone's influence peddling scheme. Do God knows what, get upset because we have a guy who abuses women getting into office, and we're going to call it racist because we're upset about how that reflects in our community? It's not okay. And one of the reasons I decided to speak on this is I went back to work recently, long overdue, gave two years of my prime earning career to build back up the city because people I love asked me to, and honest to God, because it's the first place I felt like home. I felt like somebody had to do this. I don't feel like it's wasted. I learned skills. I met real friends, real people I can count on, people who know what my reputation is. They know they can trust what I say. I know it's a consternation of a lot of people up here and in city council that I know more than I should, but frankly, I'm about the only person a lot of people in here trust. And Julian, welcome to the team and get used to that because you're next up. Okay, so ma'am, I want to sit and talk to you because I have a feeling I've heard from quite a lot of people something similar to what you're going to say. I don't want to get the city in trouble. I'm going to do my duty and protect us legally, but I want to hear what you have to say. I have a feeling I got a pretty good idea what some of it is. So all that to say, look, Martinsville, when I was in Phoenix...
[inaudible]
No, ma'am. We're going to talk after. And I'm sorry to be curt, but no. When I went to Phoenix to go get my career rekindled, and I took a vacation, I sat in the hammock for the first time in probably twenty years that I sat and took a breath, looking at my phone buzzing every two seconds, "Aaron, I'm sorry, but I tried contacting so and so. Aaron, can you call me about this? This isn't fair." And I'm looking at what's going on here, and you know what strikes me finally? Life's too short for this. Martinsville needs to grow the hell up. The world does not have time for these silly problems, the race hustling. The guy who came here and spoke, never once, it's everybody else's fault, never once did this. If you do not know about Rico Johnson, go read the Henry County Enterprise. This is a person who has spent a lifetime hurting people, stealing from people. Everyone up here knows it, by the way. That Enterprise article's not the first time that information's made its way to us. We're fighting a proxy war up here over somebody who blew into this community, after getting kicked out of many others, taking advantage of people. And then here we are, pretending like this is a decent person giving back to the community, blaming our police, race hustling, saying, "No, Susan, you're wrong. It's just racist. I'm not a bad guy." I've seen the videos of the guy speaking to people. I don't think people know the evidence that's out there on this guy. So Martinsville, you can listen to me, not listen to me, I really don't care. My life's going to go on, but grow up. So listen, I'm going to part on this. And you wonder why I constantly hound people about this, and it's not to be mean to you. I don't trust you. I do not. And I don't think you've been a good steward of this community. We spent three million dollars on baseball fields. Now we have six million something dollars coming up for one infrastructure project. Anybody notice in the news, we have water mains breaking left and right? Where do you think we're headed?
It just reported over the weekend, we had another water main break in the area.
Where do you think that money's coming from? Oh, and good news, while we've been race hustling, running people out of here, turning the state off, where do you think that money's going to come from? Because now we don't have people wanting to do projects here anymore. Now people are going to go six hundred feet outside the city limits because the county's better to work with in the city. Guess what? Your taxes are going up, your rates are going up. There's not other people coming in to distribute that money. So listen, if you're a decent person, who believes that race issues are a serious problem that's contributing to your hardship in this city, fine, I don't live your life, you might be right. But please do your research and don't fall victim to this stuff, because I think a lot of people got race hustled into silliness, and now you are all going to pay for it. And I would love, I talked a big game my first two years here. I'm going to do this. We're going to do that. Martinsville can do all these things. This is a beautiful city. Everybody in the world wants to come here. Not anymore. Not anymore. And you guys want to know one other thing. Working with other elected officials in other localities, they used to say things like, "Oh, my gosh, we're so glad Martinsville's back. We've got this, that, and the other coming to Southern Virginia, and Martinsville's got to be part of it." I haven't heard that in a minute. It's been probably about four or five months since I've heard that. Now we just have counties running off, building their own housing, building their own commerce, which is historically completely unheard of. Cities do that. Counties do industrial and agriculture and stuff like that. So now we're just completely missing our opportunity here. So, you know, I love this community. I don't want to give up on it, but my God, we've got to grow up. And I'm now faced with a very serious challenge of, do I spend the last of my youth fighting against something that frankly, we all voted for and clearly want, in my estimation? If you're asleep at the wheel and this message shocks you, stuns you, concerns you, please wake up and vote in the next election and save this community, because if you don't do it, it's going down.
Now, politics, okay. We talk about politicians, we say, "Oh, we hate politicians because you can never get a straight answer out of them." Well, then someone like Aaron gets on the city council and he just tells you what he's thinking. I don't really know if he was looking at Kathy Lawson, or if he was looking at Elsie Jones when he said, "Look, I don't trust you. I'm not trying to be mean to you, but I don't trust you." Well, then you get someone who says that, and they say, "Well, that's not politically correct." Listen, I have some stuff that I want to talk about the politics, and I want to start out this way. Does everybody remember this? We all know it's nasty. And so if you go in, and like I said, we are citizens together, we're neighbors together, okay? I was walking down the road and I saw this old lady had left her headlights on, and she went into a business. So I followed her in, and I said, "Hey, you left your headlights on." I said, "I don't know how long you're going to be in here, but I don't want your battery to die." And she just, over and over, "Oh, thank you. Thank you for coming in here. You stopped what you're doing. Thank you, thank you." And then at some point I said, "It's no problem." I said, "You're my neighbor." And she looked at me, she goes, "I am?" And she's trying to think if we live beside each other. And I said, "Yes, everybody. We're neighbors." And she goes, "Oh, yeah." Look, y'all, if you know the political scene is nasty, then just go in and try to, you know, keep it from being that way. Does everybody remember this article that came out? Chad Martin called into Star News late one night and just went on a rant, and one of the things that he said was about Aaron Rawls. This is how Aaron Rawls started out his city council tenure. Chad Martin then referred to rumors of Aaron Rawls possibly having a lifestyle that's out of touch with living in the South and out of touch with living in the Bible Belt. That was like maybe two or three in the morning where Chad Martin had that rant, and then May twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four, Chad Martin got a DUI, and you know, here's his mugshot, and it's like, you know, maybe, maybe don't try to pull the Bible Belt card, right? But then here's the next one. When Rayshawn Gravely started running, you know, doing his campaign for city council, I, you know, I think it was Aaron who just said, "Gravely won't get any votes," and just kind of dismissed him. And I think this was in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-two, Rayshawn Gravely was arrested on charges, what is it, accused of strangling a girlfriend in two thousand and twenty-one, I think with two events, one happening in North Carolina, and then something else also happening in Martinsville, Virginia. So two different incidents, and he gets arrested for it. Now, here's, here's what I didn't like out of that. This is America, and in America, you're what? You are innocent until you're proven guilty. I did not, look, I did not like the way those news cycles ran, where it was like, we threw him under the bus from the get-go. You just like, people heard the stories come out, the scratching and the choking and the whatnot. It's like, well, he's going to have to have his due process. I don't like punishing people before due process goes through. And everybody was ready to punish him before due process goes through. And then what happened? October eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, on April two, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, Gravely turned himself in, blah, blah, blah. Former Henry County deputy found not guilty. So not only were people ready to punish Gravely before he had his due process, then his due process goes through, and you know, it took these people, it took the jury or whoever was in charge of the discussion, it took them like thirty minutes. So they heard everything in the courtroom, they go back, they have their conversation, and within thirty minutes, they decided he's not guilty. Hey, look, you may not, you can say what you want to say. Well, I still think he did it. Nobody cares what you think. He went through the American judicial system, he had his due process, and he came out, declared innocent, not guilty. Move on. That's it. I don't like saying, "Well, you know, he was, he still went through the process of it." That's like someone says, someone says, "You shouldn't even been in there." He shouldn't have even been in there. When he went in there, they said, "Well, there's nothing to this." So no, I didn't like that. You're going through this and you're hearing all this talk. Now, that doesn't mean that some of the other stuff that was said in the city council meeting is not happening. Rico Johnson is the owner of a eatery in Uptown Martinsville called Corner Kitchen, and he keeps having problems with his roadways. Like he says, you know, "They blocked the road, they closed the road, and it kills my business." He owns a restaurant called Corner Kitchen. I have never eaten at Corner Kitchen. I have no intention of eating at Corner Kitchen. What? Because a black man owns it? No. Because they have a bar. And I don't eat at restaurants that have bars. Why? Because I don't want to be around riffraff that's at the bar. It's like all this talk at each other, you're neighbors, okay? And half of it, I don't know him, but it's like, how many people would claim, "Hey, I'm a churchgoer." It doesn't really like, look like churchgoing is doing much for anybody right now. So I put up Rico Johnson, he came to the city council meeting, same, that's a, boy, that was a eventful city council meeting. Rico Johnson came in and he basically blamed his business woes on race. He said, "It's a racial issue in Martinsville." The city manager is black, the mayor is black, the newly elected city councilman is black, and Mr. Kelvin Perkins is one of the board of directors of the Heritage Foundation, and he's also an employee of the city of Danville. What? I don't want to go to the restaurant because it has a bar. I can't speak for anybody else, but that's why I don't want to go there. And they've had numerous issues, alcohol related, just patron related, that I don't want to deal with. And it's like, you know, corn, I don't go to Applebee's. I don't want to be around people who are even getting a buzz. My wife, my toddler, I don't want to do it. It has nothing to do with race. So when we're having all this conversation, look, we're neighbors, we see each other on a regular basis. And you know, I've had a lot of interaction with Rayshawn, I just bump into him in town. And he's my neighbor. So I don't really like the way that a lot of these conversations are going. Now I will say this, I'll introduce another thing and I'm making my way towards where I really want to be. Politics is one thing, right? I mean, I, I think that at this moment, someone could say that I'm going to bat for Rayshawn. You gotta have your due process. We can't be out here judging this person before an official judge judges him. And then once we have the ruling, I, as a private citizen, I can't overturn the official government ruling. He was declared not guilty. So I think someone could say I'm going up to bat for him. I feel like I am, but I tell you, I didn't care for this move. Politics is one thing. Religion is another. And when it comes to religion, J.C. Richardson is a false teacher. He went on Star News, I'll just give you the clip. And he asked, like, if you listen to this.
Surprise, I didn't think, I didn't think, but he still, he's, he looks good. He looks good for a lady, he's, you know, he's been, um, an active servant, man in the community. I've, I've never heard anything bad about this Richard. Um, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, he used to be like a P.O. or something?
Oh, very soon.
Yeah. I did hear, yes.
Yeah. Oh, wow. Back in the seventies, juvenile domestic relationship.
I, I did hear, I did hear that he did not play when he was there. I don't know, I think he was just straight by the book, you know? But overall, he's, he's a good man and I definitely thank him for endorsing me.
Now, I just got to tell you, that one turned me off. I'm out, you know? The business show, they hear a bad deal, they don't like that, I'm out, I'm out. When you start getting involved with J.C. Richardson, this is my thing, y'all. When I did see, right, same thing for L.C. Jones. L.C. Jones and Rayshawn Gravely both talk trash about local pastors behind the scenes. But then we start looking for endorsements and you start looking for votes, then you just start turning to any religious figure you can grab a hold to. Now, look at this. I'm a Christian and I want to have the religious conversations. That may not be important to everybody, but if you're going to call him Pastor Richardson. Pastor Richardson, J.C. Richardson wrote this book, it's about the 40 pages booklet, What You Should Know About the Contemporary Church of Christ by James C. Richardson Jr. I don't mind that he wrote this book. Good for him, you know? I basically say that it's 40 pages that shows he doesn't know what he's talking about. And Mr. Richardson is moving up in age. I wish that Mr. Richardson had a student that I could debate with on Star News television. And then we do it on YouTube too. You know, my dad had a debate with J.C. Richardson. And this is my thing, let me pause for a moment. I'm putting all these people on the screen. Look, I live in the community, okay? I understand the weight of what I'm doing by, by talking about folk. And I'm just trying to be in the conversation and I think that there's some points that need to be made in this conversation. Look, I don't think J.C. Richardson is an honest person. Well, how could you say that? Based on his religion, that should be the most central part of his life. Here he is, quote, debating with my dad on television.
That I cannot document. And then they turned around and condemned the Baptist preacher because he wouldn't side with them. What, if that's not hypocritical, brother Robinson, what is that? That is totally hypocrisy. So you owe the Baptists an apology, you owe the Presbyterians an apology, you owe the Methodists an apology, you owe the apostolics an apology.
Why is my dad waving that piece of paper? Because they had a contract. J.C. Richardson bought this airtime and he signed a contract with my dad that said they would get equal time. This video is two hours long and it's two hours of J.C. Richardson just, you know, steamrolling. He just ranted for two hours long, didn't let my dad say anything. So what did my dad do?
May God bless you. Have you heard another side tonight of what the Bible says?
Did you record this?
I just turned it on.
Now we're going to record. Now, he just wrote the contract, it says right here on four, that I will be getting to speak my position. Now I bought extra time because I knew that you would be the kind of man that you are and break your contract. So you can stay with me, you getting this, Joseph?
Got it.
You can stay with me in 30 minutes or you can run off like you're doing right now. And we're going to go ahead and take your broadcast because you broke the contract. You can stay with me in 30 minutes or you can run off like you're doing right now. Or you can run off broadcast because you broke the contract. If you break number four, then number one doesn't stand.
Oh, you said no.
Number one doesn't, well, we'll see.
Yes, it does.
I, I don't see how you figure this one out, but I'm going to tell you this, I'm going to use your tape.
There's J.C. Richardson. That's why I don't think that he's an honest man. He had a written, look, y'all, if a contract doesn't mean anything, then what does? He had a written contract for even time both ways. He didn't let my dad talk for two hours, so what, my, my dad saw it coming. And so dad bought a second hour behind J.C.'s program from Star News. So as soon as the camera went down, the camera was still going because Johnny Robertson had more airtime. And he said to J.C., now you can stay on my airtime and we'll have some talk for real. And he just left out because he doesn't have the truth, he's not teaching the truth. He is a dishonest person. So when I basically say, you know, so-and-so entered the chat, when I saw that J.C. Richardson got in, that's when I was saying, I'm out. Now, and you know, if we're all being honest, the way that stuff just gets thrown, quotes in the newspaper and quotes on whatever the media outlet might be. So while Chad Martin is talking about Aaron Rawls having a lifestyle that doesn't line up with the Bible Belt, why don't y'all get Chad Martin to tell you how J.C. Richardson behaved in Northern Virginia at a political think tank? Well, what does that mean? Ask Chad Martin. Now, here's what I want to talk to y'all about. J.C. Richardson gets involved. I'm, he comes on Star News, he says, I'm here to endorse Rayshawn Gravely. Okay. I, you know, I'm not apostolic, I'm not Pentecostal, I'm not charismatic. And I've always said this too, and I don't mind plugging it in. Someone says, well, you just don't like J.C. Richardson because he's black. No. Leonard R. Jones. At that city council meeting, I have always said, J.C. Richardson was extremely ugly to Leonard R. Jones. They had a disagreement and, and J.C. Richardson just chewed, chewed Leonard R. Jones out. I, look, I just, I just think he's a dishonest person, J.C. Richardson. Think he's a rude person, that's just all there is to it. So when he started putting in an endorsement, I said, nah, this ain't working for me. Now, the election happens in November. J.C. Richardson puts his endorsement in, second time, Martinsville City logo. Location, St. Paul High Street Baptist Church, Fayette Street, Martinsville, Virginia. Reverend Charles Whitfield, who is a Baptist, Bishop Allen Preston, who is an apostolic. And I saw that and I thought, this is odd. It's, it's odd because the Baptists and the Apostolic are getting together? We'll get there. No, it's odd that the city government logo is all over this religious flyer. They put this online and then I'm going to show you another video.
The Martinsville City.
This is, this is the December 23rd Call to Unity and Prayer with Charles Whitfield and Allen Preston at St. Paul High Street Baptist Church. Now, I think the audio might be a little bit low, but I'm giving it everything I got. Listen to what he says.
Clergy, Henry County clergy, all clergy persons that are present here tonight, we want to say thank you to these persons who have come tonight and did not wait to get here to start praying. These individuals who started praying once the call was made, the last all persons of the clergy, if you would be staying at this time. Let's give God praise and thank you. We are so grateful to you. We are grateful to you. We are grateful to you. We are grateful to you. And I want to say thank you to Reverend Divins, David Pastor here at St. Paul High Street Baptist Church family for opening your doors and allowing us to come together on tonight. Before I move further, if, if you would, we were prayerful about whether or not we should go live on social media, et cetera. But we are, we are live tonight on social media.
Hear what he said? We were prayerful. We were prayerful whether we should post this live on internet media. So we want to have a call to unity and prayer, public meeting, but we have to be prayerful whether we want to make it public or not. Do you know why? Because they made an absolute mess out of this. They got the city logo all over their religious gathering. And then I, look, for the life of me, I don't know why Greg Hodges is in there. And someone might say, well, he's an educator. I mean, it's kind of, it's a given that he's going to be there. No, it's not. This is a religious meeting that not even Greg Hodges agrees with, like just absolutely hypocritical. What is going on? In November, it started out as Star News, like J.C. Richardson goes on Star News and he says, I'm here to give my endorsement. And then the next thing you know, you got a local Baptist and an apostolic got the city logo as if the city is backing them. That's what I didn't like. So when I saw this and I said, I'm out, now it's turning into the apostolic's and the local Baptists, First Baptist Eastside Martinsville are acting as if, is the city backing them? City logo all over y'all's advertisement? Was this a government sponsored event? Now, this is where some people are going to say, whatever happened to the separation of church and state? Let's talk about this. Separation of church and state is not in the Constitution. And the thought of separation of church and state is not the idea that we could never discuss the, you know, the principle of right and wrong in a city council meeting. We're going to get to have those conversations. Clearly, 2015, uh, church and state, 2015 Supreme Court ruled in favor of granting marriage certificates to homosexuals. Well, no one had a problem in 2015 that the government was dabbling in that. Look, I don't really care about a government piece of paper because the government is giving out faulty divorce piece of papers to people who should not be getting divorced according to what the Bible says. Here's my thing. Separation of church and state is not in the Constitution. The idea of separation of church and state never created the idea, was never intended to give the idea that the city council and citizens could never have a conversation in the open about what's right and wrong. This is the idea. In the colonies, the Anglicans, the Church of England was a government enforced entity. You could not preach publicly unless you were an Anglican. You could not get a marriage certificate unless you were an Anglican. Look, you couldn't even come into certain towns if you were a Roman papist. You can't even cross the line. That's church and state. It meant not having a state sponsored slash financed sect by the state. And I have to tell y'all, this sure looks like an attempt to be the state church. Why would two sectarian pastors who don't even agree with each other feel the need to put the Martinsville logo all over Martinsville City Without Limits? The Martinsville City Government should have zero to do with this sectarian meeting. And again, I have no clue why Greg Hodges was there. Now, I put this online. I tagged everybody in city council on it. I tagged a number of people in this. You know who responded to me? One person. City logo, was this a government sponsored event? Julian May, the only person who responded. He said, I find it totally inappropriate. I am beyond offended that my city's logo was taken and used by these pastors, including L.C. Jones and others who orchestrated it. Mayor L.C. Jones was at that meeting. I don't know if he knew that they were using the city logo and trying to basically portray that the city was behind what they're doing. I don't want the city involved in anything like that. I don't like the idea of a collection of pastors power brokering their way into city council because that's sure what it looks like. Now, I say, I don't care for this. Julian May is the only person I got a response out of. I tell you something else. I don't care for this either. First annual mast, look, like a ball, going to like some swanky dance, a gala. Well, they spelled it, this is, you know, they're making a play and they're making a play on the word G.A.Y.L.A., a gay la. Well, I asked this question. January 25th, 2025, doors open at 7:00 PM and it's going to be held at the Virginia Museum of Natural History. I only got one response. Was this sectarian meeting, was this, you know, backed and sponsored by the local government? Julian May, he says, I found it totally inappropriate. I'm beyond offended that my city's logo was taken and used by these pastors, L.C. Jones and others who orchestrated it. So he said, to my knowledge, no, it wasn't government, government an event. I don't know why they did it. Well, then you might see this, Martinsville, what is it called? Martinsville Henry County Pride Coalition. I asked the same question. Are tax dollars paying for this gay party? Again, Julian May gave me an answer, no. Well, I'm happy about that. I'm happy that tax dollars are not going to basically pay for this. And then he said, also, he thinks the event got canceled. But he said, no, the museum can be rented for private events. Okay. If you go on Facebook and you find Martinsville Henry County Pride Coalition, you'll find Julian May out there. This is where someone says, hey, I don't like seeing Julian May with a gay pride group. And here's my response. You're going to see Mayor Jones with a gay pride group. Martinsville Henry County Pride Coalition, numerous occasions, you're going to find Mayor Jones with the gay pride group. And this is where I'm sure, you know, and I, he, L.C. Jones did some video with BTW where he said, you know, he said, I grew up all my life in church, sometimes six, seven days a week. At this particular event, they were just out picking up garbage. Hey, I'm all for cleaning up garbage. I pick up a certain amount and when I go out on walks, I try to pick up garbage myself. What I don't want to do is broadcast myself with a lifestyle that I don't agree with. I don't know why we couldn't have gone out and picked up garbage as citizens of the city without it turning into some sexual orientation debate. Why can't we just be neighbors without it being turned into whatever your sexual practices are in private? Then someone says, it's a sin. Yeah, it's a sin. The Bible would call homosexuality a sin, but I'm going to talk about that in just a moment. But my thing was just the tax dollars. Is it getting paid by tax dollars? No. Okay, I still don't know how I feel about it being at a government funded museum, but that's another discussion. I don't know how I feel about that. But he says, no, it's not being paid for by tax dollars. And if you say you don't like seeing Julian May with a gay pride group, we're going to see Mayor Jones with a gay pride group. And that's where I have down here at the bottom, a vote's a vote, right? If you're basically paying attention, we're 30 minutes in, you say, boy, there's a bunch of stuff that I'm just not happy with across the board. I hear you. But I didn't want to say this. Hey, I don't like seeing Julian May with a gay pride group. You know, go back to this video. Charles Whitfield says, we want to have all the clergy stand up.
Clergy, Henry County clergy, all clergy persons that are present here tonight, we want to say thank you to these persons who have come tonight and did not wait to get here to start praying. Amen.
Uh, all the clergy stand up. That, this event was nothing more than a political scene to see and be seen. All the clergy, stand up. We're going to put it on the internet, stand up, y'all. We got different city officials, every clergy stand up. Hey, Julian May is not a clergyman. But I cannot tell you how many people that have told me that they left Avery Preston's Pentecostal Church because he is an adulterer. His own family members have told me, like, they say, he's family. You know, I'm going to see him here and there, you know, and they're talking about a family function. They say, I'm going to see him at the family function, but I could not stay in his church because he is an adulterer. Now, my question is this, is LGBT somehow more sinful than adultery? No. And that's why I said about the government, I'm not really concerned about government piece of papers because they're giving divorce tickets out to people who should not be getting them. Look, this is 1 Corinthians 6:9. No, you not the unrighteous shall not inherit the kingdom of God, be not deceived, neither fornicators nor idolaters. Look, there it is. Nor adulterers. Hey, you know what's in the list? Abuser of themselves with mankind, that's homosexual. It's in the list with adulterers. How does he get to be up on the stage? Now, here's another one. Someone says, you've heard? When I say, I cannot tell you how many people have told me that they've gotten away from Avery Preston because he's an adulterer. Uh, look what Paul said in 1 Corinthians 5. It's reported commonly there's fornication among you. Look, even Paul said, okay, I'm hearing about this all over the place, that it's reported that fornication is among y'all. It's called Greater Love Ministries in Martinsville, Virginia. Avery Preston is the pastor and I cannot tell you how many different accounts of him and his girlfriend and his adultery happening in, like, everybody seeing him make this great big scene over his adulterous relationships. So look, don't give me this stuff about having a fake Martinsville city endor- I sure hope it's fake. Don't give me this stuff about having a fake Martinsville government endorsement for your prayer meeting with a pastor who is known as an adulterer and then turn around and tell me you don't like seeing a city council member associated with homosexual Pride Coalition. It's, like he says, not tax dollars, but you get my point? There's just a lot of stuff going on. You can't blame everything on local government, y'all. This is where, like I said, politics first, then religion, then Greg Hodges. You cannot just blame everything on local government. Do you know when Rayshawn, let's go back to him, and we don't need audio, I'm just putting it up on the screen. When Rayshawn went on Star News and he was getting the endorsement from J.C. Richardson, one of the things that he said, J.C. Richardson has known me since I was a child. And then Charles Work said, oh, you've been going to J.C. Richardson's church? He said, oh, no, no, I'm not a member of J.C. Richardson's church. He said, I just lived down the road from J.C. Richardson. And then he said, I had to jog his memory that I was the young man down the road. He didn't even go to his church. See, this is what I'm saying. You got the local government and what's their job? Economics, education? Yeah, and here's another one, education, economics, things of that nature. It is not the government's job to shape and mold the character of citizens in the area. This is what I'm saying, you can't just blame everything on local government. And let me say this too. What, two years? I think he's been on two years, two years new, brand, brand new, brand new. I don't know how long Kathy Lawson has been involved. Look, they, they have short-lived political careers. These are the longstanding pastors of the community. So if you're looking around and you say, boy, we got problems in the community, who, who really should be getting more of the blame? Well, the mamas and the daddies. Sure, the mamas and the daddies, but the mamas and the daddies are not getting any help from local sectarian pastors like Charles Whitfield, Greg Hodges, or Allen Preston, or certainly not Avery Preston. They're not getting any help. Now, let me go backwards. What, someone says, what difference does it make? What difference does it make if there's a city logo on site, on top of this sectarian Call to Unity and Prayer with a Baptist and a Pentecostal? What difference does it make? Look, y'all know what does the Bible say? And you know that in the summertime, we have two-week tent meetings. When the two-week tent meeting comes around in the third Monday of June and we start handing out our flyers, invitation, two weeks, every night, 7 o'clock, no collections. We don't try to take money from the people. Can we put the city logo on our flyers? Can we portray ourselves as being government backed? City council's on our side, can we do that? Martinsville City Without Limits, Martinsville logo, Charles Whitfield and Allen Preston, Martinsville City Council, Martinsville Local Government, Martinsville City Manager, are y'all backing Charles Whitfield? Are y'all backing Allen Preston and their religious movements? Who else could do that? Who else could do that before he starts, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, that's too much, too far? Look, I don't want it, that business of having like a church backed by the state. We do not want that going on. Now let's go back over here. You can't blame everything on local government, y'all. This event was just an absolute total sham. And you know, you know who is so happy that they didn't participate in this? And someone says, you? No, let me tell you. The person who is so happy that they did not participate in this is Libby Grammer. Libby Grammer is so happy right now that she moved out of town when she did because if she had stayed just a little bit longer, she would have been up in here with the nonsense. Now, look at this, look, someone, the nonsense, someone says, boy, he's turning it on now. This is an absolute joke. You guys look at politicians and you call them like dirty scoundrels and just ignorant jokes and whatnot? Boy, the pastors have the politicians beat, let me tell you. Presiding Reverend Charles Whitfield, you know, what would you think? Let's see. Psalm 111, verse number nine. What would you think if Mayor Jones came into city council and everybody said, you know, when he came in, they said, "Here comes President Jones." Mayor, no, 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 no. President Jones. What are you talking, what if he came in one night, he's Mayor Jones, and everybody said, "Here comes Governor Jones"? Reverend, that is as ridiculous, calling the mayor president, calling the mayor governor is as ridiculous as calling some man reverend. Do you know this is in the Bible? This is where I say, "Look, the pastors just have the politicians beat." Psalm 111, verse number nine. "He sent redemption to his people; he has commanded his covenant forever. Holy and reverend is his name." Whose name? God's name. Holy and reverend. That's why I say, "This was a political scene, nothing more but to see and be seen for Charles Whitfield and Allen Preston." So, you move from Charles Whitfield, Reverend Charles Whitfield underneath Reverend Thomas Divin, same thing, and it's not enough. You're a reverend and you're also called interim pastor. Hey, get as many titles as you can in there, man, because you want to beat the people over the head with your authority. Opening selection, elder, elder pastor, same thing. Elder pastor Arnold Bullock, pastor Avery Preston, and then here's Mayor Elsie Jones. Now, here's the thing. It's, it's a religious meeting. They put the city logo all over their paraphernalia, and then they advertised him as Mayor Jones. Why not just say Elsie Jones? Because if he's not there, if he's there and it's not official business, why does it have to be noted that he's the mayor? Hey, we got the mayor in here, and we got the city logo all over our stuff. Everybody needs to wake up. You do not want pastors trying to strong-arm their way into the local government. And you can just take a look at city council in Danville. What's their name? Larry Campbell and Alonzo Jones. Both of them are Pentecostal, they're apostolics, they're apostolic pastors and they're apostolic trustees. And what did they do? Boy, they just, they waved the casino in. They, they are religious folk, they're sectarian, and they didn't help the city of Danville at all. What's his name? His name Sherman Saunders? I'll just call him Mr. Saunders. Mr. Saunders is a Baptist, did the same thing. You didn't get anything in Danville off of their sectarian, "Uh, Reverend, righteous man, they just let the casino come in." You're not gonna get anything in Martinsville, Virginia by letting sectarian pastors, Pentecostal Baptists, what have you, by strong-arming their way into local government. And they're doing it by this scene right here. City logo and having the mayor come in. Bishop, can someone tell me, please, the difference in all these titles? Elder, pastor, reverend, bishop, Bishop Allen Preston, they're all in a competition with each other. Now, let me show you some Bible. The division. This was an absolute sham. It's a joke. Look, this is the reason why young people don't want anything to do with what's called organized religion. This is not organized religion. This is just disorganized American sectarianism. Again, more Bible passages. Look, you're at home, okay? Get your Bible out and just thumb through Ephesians with me just for a moment. Someone says, "Hey, I, I liked it when we were moving along without the Bible and we were talking about the politicians." No, no, no. People need to educate themselves on the Bible. And also, when I say educate yourself so that you can be a part of the conversation and stop being ignorant all the time. Because ignorant's not a bad word. But when I try to talk to people, they go, "Oh, I don't know, your idea is as good as mine." No. My idea is better than yours because I actually read the Bible. Just because you don't read the Bible doesn't mean anything to the rest of us. You can be ignorant if you want to. Look at this. The idea of all these different sectarian groups just meshing into this building and calling it unity? In the Bible, there is only one church. Look at this in Ephesians, chapter 1. At the end of the chapter, look at what he says in Ephesians 1:22, if you got your Bible out. "God hath put all things under his feet, and gave him to be the head over all things to the church which is his body." The church which is his body. So, the church and the body are the same thing. Now, turn one page over, look at Ephesians, chapter 4. This is, what does the Bible say?
Am I live on the air?
You're live on the air.
I have a question. So, you're a Church of Christ minister, correct?
I am a Christian.
Okay, so, is the Church of Christ the non-instrumental group that comes from the Stone Campbell Movement? Is that the true church that goes back to the first century?
I don't even know what you would be referring to about saying the Church of Christ, non-instrumental, Stone Campbell Movement. I'm making my case from the New Testament.
Okay. Thank you so much, brother.
Okay. I'm making my case from the New Testament, he wants to talk about Stone Campbell Movement. Look at what's in the Bible. "To the church which is his body." Okay, the body and the church are the same thing. There is one body, the body of Christ. If the church and the body are the same thing, there is one body, and it's the body of Christ, then what would we say? There is one church, and it is the Church of Christ. Elsewhere, you see in Romans, chapter 16, it says, "The churches of Christ salute you." I don't know why it has become acceptable. Look at this. This is back to J.C. Richardson's paper. J.C. Richardson, let's see if it says it in here. "He preaches for the Mount Sinai Apostolic denomination." Mount Sinai Apostolic, which just means charismatic holiness, people who speak in tongues and gibberish and drool on themselves and run on, run across the pews and roll around on the floor. Uh, okay, that's disrespectful. That's how they act. That is exactly what Pentecostals do. They love to run circles around the auditorium. We got the Holy Ghost. Oh, what did the Holy Ghost lead y'all to do? We ran, we ran 15 laps around the auditorium. Praise God. Look, there's one, one church in the New Testament, and it's not Mount Sinai Apostolic, and it's not Stanley Town's Amazing Grace Baptist Church. It's not First Baptist Church, it's not Uptown Methodist. We got all these denominations when the Bible says there should be one church, and that's why I'm saying this whole meeting was a sham. The church of God which is at Corinth, the churches of God which are in Judea, same thing. The house of God which is the church of the living God. The house of God is not any given building, it is still the people. The people are the church. This unity meeting they said they had was an absolute sham. And here's where I say, what is even their commonality between Charles Whitfield and Allen Preston? Skin color? That they both like money? I don't know, because they got about as much in common with each other religiously speaking as I do with them. Charles Whitfield is in the Missionary Baptist Association. Historically, Baptists do not teach the idea of receiving the Holy Ghost for healing or speaking in tongues or rolling around on the floor. And then come over to Allen Preston. Allen Preston is a Jesus-only, One in the Godhead Apostolic. He has historically promoted speaking in tongues and, you know, the idea of come get your healing, health and wealth, sow, you know, tithe, what is it? Sow your seed, reap your blessing, all that stuff. They are not the same. The two of these men are not the same at all. Now, let me have a moment and go over here. When you go to Charles Whitfield, this is a First Baptist Church in Martinsville, Charles Whitfield. Charles Whitfield is very educated, just not really in the Bible. But they say, what did their website says? "Our pastor is currently serving as moderator of the Smith River Missionary Baptist Association Incorporated." Okay? You go over here, Facebook, Smith River Baptist Association, someone says, "Well, that doesn't say missionary." Here's their picture, Smith River Missionary Baptist Association. They say about themselves, "We are under the affiliation of the Virginia Baptist State Convention." Okay? Let's go to their website. Virginia Baptist State Convention, the true God. Look at this. "That in the unity of the Godhead there are three persons, the Father, Son, and the Holy Ghost, equal in every divine perfection, and executing distinct but harmonious offices in the great work of redemption." Okay, there it is. He's separate from Allen Preston. How are they pretending? And if Allen Preston would be true with his idea, Gino Jennings, who is a One in the Godhead Apostolic, Gino Jennings would say Charles Whitfield going to hell. Well, if he's pretending that he's like Gino Jennings, and a lot of folk around here like Gino Jennings, well, how is Allen Preston getting to have this unity date with Charles Whitfield and suddenly the disagreements don't matter? Why is it that Charles Whitfield and others don't have the Holy Ghost? Well, if you're asking a Pentecostal why someone doesn't have the Holy Ghost, they're gonna say, "It's because you're an unclean vessel. If you haven't spoken in tongues with manifestation of the Holy Ghost, you are an unsaved, unclean vessel." Now, here's the next one. Politics, y'all, just politics over religion. Why, why are they trying to have this scene with the Martinsville logo and then they got Mayor Elsie Jones in there and they have him labeled, "Mayor, Mayor Elsie Jones"? You know, I got to looking at this program. Thomas Divin's, I know who that is. Charles, clearly I know Charles Whitfield, Avery Preston. I just go through the list, there's a handful of people that I all know, and there will be some names that don't just stand out to me. And you know, as I looked over this list, I thought with myself, "Why, why is Kelvin Perry not here? Why is Naomi Hodge Muse not in here?" And then I started thinking, hmm, Kelvin Perry and Naomi Hodge Muse are quote ministers for the Presbyterian sects. Presbyterians sprinkle their babies, they'll sprinkle water on, they'll pour water on them. And I thought to myself, "I wonder if Charles Whitfield and Allen Preston won't let them in because they're quote pedo-Baptists." No, that wasn't it. Because they had Faith Weedling, who's a Methodist woman preacher, come in and she led prayer over everybody. So, they don't, look, commonality, what's the commonality between Charles Whitfield and Allen Preston? Well, they do agree that baptism is by immersion. They don't think very much of it because Faith Weedling came in, who is a Methodist, another sectarian person, and she's a woman preacher, and she believes that baptism can be by sprinkling or pouring. Now, I understand that to a lot of people who tuned in for the political science conversation says, "None of this means anything." Well, let me tell you, to church-going folk, this ought to mean something because it's a lot of unbiblical practices and a lot of compromise and a lot of hypocrisy going on while we look out at our young people and say, "How come they don't want to go to church? They don't want to come to church because this stuff is stupid." It's unbiblical, it's just as plain as day, just any. I'm saying any, like you talk about these Gen Z, I'm a millennial, but you talk about Gen Z, these dumb kids. Well, I tell you what, these dumb kids can figure out y'all's nonsense like in 30 minutes. Now, I just, it just baffles me. And here we are, and I say, "And Greg Hodges is the worst offender." What? Yeah, absolutely. Clergy, all the clergy come up. Anybody who said, "Well, maybe Greg Hodges wasn't there in like a religious sense, Greg Hodges is just there because he's an educator." That makes sense. The educator came to like the, the local meeting. Well, how come he got up when they called for the clergy? Why does there always have to be a distinction between clergy and laity? You know, someone said, "Well, we're all God's children." Yeah, well, I guess, I guess some of God's children are just, just way more special than the other because we always having to give clergy special parking, preferential treatment, they get to come up on stage and we clap for them.
Tonight, especially to lift up our city leadership.
I have one more, we don't really need the audio for it, but... Gets up when the clergy are called. He's there to offer prayer because he's a quote pastor of Stanley Town's Amazing Grace Baptist Church. But then here's the big one. Why is he the biggest offender? There is no way that you're gonna get me in a room with a United Methodist Woman Pastor who has made this grand big push for the LGBT movement, who sprinkles babies, who sprinkles adults and pours water on adults, who is just so absolutely contrary to the New Testament, and then there's Greg Hodges over there in the corner, letting this sectarian heretic lead him in prayer. Go back to the internet. Listen, I get it, you don't know what all the variations of the sects are. Well, I do. There's, you know, why are they called Missionary Baptists? They try, they're trying to separate themselves from Calvinistic Baptists. Calvinistic Baptists, like Reformed Baptists, who don't believe in missions, right? Soul-winning. So, these folk call themselves Missionary Baptists. And you get Southern Baptists that are different from these people. They believe in soul-winning, but they have their own entity. You have North American Baptists. And then you, co-op Baptists, who are super liberal like the United Methodist Sect. But then you have the Independent Fundamental Baptists. And how do you find out who's Independent Fundamental Baptist? You go to kjvchurches.com. KJVchurches.com will give you a list of local IFB, Independent Fundamental. And you say, "Well, what does that mean?" Independent Fundamentals, Independent Fundamental Baptists pride themselves on being rough, tough, hellfire, you know, hellfire, brimstone preaching. Here's Amazing Grace Baptist Church, Stanley Town, Virginia, kjvchurches.com. What are they? Church category? They are an Independent Baptist Church. What do they do? Pastor named Greg Hodges. Where are they located? Position on the Bible? They're KJV. Bibles use? KJV only. Worship style? Traditional. They're, they're the rough and tough Independent Fundamental Baptists. They're the rough and tough. But here you go, here's your rough and tough pastor in the room with a woman preacher. Here's your rough and tough pastor in the room with Pentecostal pastors who are telling people they can speak in tongues when they can't, they can heal people when they can't. Y'all remember COVID? Of course you do. Y'all remember Mark Price? Mark Price was a Pentecostal preacher who told everybody in the community he could heal folk. Mark Price died from COVID. These people shut their churches down from COVID when they said they could have healed everybody. And then there's Greg Hodges in the room, giving some type of credence that this is any type of an acceptable religious gathering. Caleb, this is America, they have the freedom, they have the freedom to gather. Sure, they have the freedom to gather, I hope they keep their freedom to gather. You know what Greg Hodges had the freedom to do? Decline this invitation. You know what Greg Hodges had the freedom to do? When he got the microphone, Greg Hodges could have said, "Uh, you know, I was given 15 minutes to pray. How about this? How about I talk with y'all? Neighbors, let me talk with y'all. We're not gonna get anywhere as far as unity in the community while we stay divided in our religion." Y'all think we're gonna come together as a community when we can't go to church together? And why can't we go to church together? Because so many people involved in church have unbiblical practices. Hey, y'all, come on, I'm saying, come down to 823 Sterling Avenue, visit with us. Y'all got women preachers? No, we don't have women preachers. And then the collection of people say, "Well, we're not coming." Well, the difference between me and those people is I'm trying to do what the Bible says, and they don't care about the Bible. Here's Greg Hodges making his way out, right there, in the middle of everything. Is he gonna say anything? No. Someone might say, "Well, Caleb, that's the wrong place in the time, that's not the place in the time to say something about women preachers." Huh. I went to the building, Stanley Town's Amazing Grace Baptist Church, I went to the building, I went to Greg Hodges' office, I asked him about all the women preachers in Martinsville, and he goes, "I am not gonna comment on that right now. I will, and I am not gonna comment on that, I'll talk with you later." Okay, so he told me, "If you sit 30 minutes through the service, I'll talk with you." Next thing you know, his wife's kicking me out. It's a joke. Let your women keep science in the churches. Faith, what's her name? Weedling. Faith Weedling, United Methodist Uptown Woman Preacher, she doesn't care about these verses. She doesn't care about any of the Bible. And it kind of looks like Greg Hodges doesn't either. Looks like Charles Whitfield doesn't. Looks like Avery and Allen Preston don't. Looks like Avery and Allen Preston don't. Look, if you're not gonna take a stand on what the Bible says about, you know, heterosexual monogamy, keeping your marriage, raising your own kids, being a good citizen, you're not paying attention to any of these. I don't know why you would pay attention to the others. These people have zero unity. It is all just this facade and a charade. It's a game, and they're playing it against you. They're keeping you ignorant. They're keeping you in the dark so they can just keep taking your money. 2 Timothy 4:2, "You know, the Bible says, 'Preach the word,' but somehow, it's never the time and the place. Uh, shouldn't do it here." Well, where do you do it? Do it in the newspaper. Nah, newspapers try to censor you. Do it on TV. Do it on Star News. People call in, talk to Charles Rourke, "Hey, we wish you wouldn't put those guys on TV." Like I've said before, Charles Rourke is a mouthpiece for your First Amendment rights. He believes in the freedom of speech. And I haven't had any problem censorship-wise with the Henry County Enterprise, but boy, I had trouble with the Martinsville Bulletin. Preach the word. Look, you see all this stuff going on? What does the Bible say? Look, homosexuality is a sin. Okay, it doesn't mean I hate you. It just means that it's not God's ideal. And if it's not God's ideal, then it's gonna come out that it's gonna be harmful in some type of way. It's not what's best for us. So, I basically take the biblical position. I'm gonna continue to promote heterosexual monogamy, right? And it's a lifelong covenant. I'm not out here supporting half of the divorces that happen. I wish that we didn't have a high divorce rate, but there's a bunch of people who are getting divorced and remarried who should not marry, and that's just adultery is just as sinful as homosexuality. Doesn't mean I hate the adulterers. But it does mean our society will collapse. The less that we respect marriage, the less that we respect human rights. I'm saying like life, a right to have your life and be born, then yeah, we'll just continue to crumble. And just in a general sense, our neighbors, we don't have respect for each other, just in a civil type of way. And someone might hear this broadcast and say, "Well, it didn't seem like you have too much respect for what's going on with these folk." Hey, when it comes to their religion, I have zero respect for their religion. I think that they have the freedom to do what they want to do as far as the religion goes, but as far as the Bible teaches, they're all wrong. What's wrong with that? He says that he's wrong. He says that he's wrong, and all three of them in secret say she's wrong. So there's nothing wrong with me coming on saying all four of them are wrong. You gotta study, y'all. Preachers need to preach the word, and Christians need to be Bible students. Is that really that crazy that we're having to say that? Preachers ought to preach. Christians ought to study. Well, that's where we are right now. Preachers don't want to preach, and people who would call themselves Christians don't want to read the Bible. And so they're just all out here floating around, making all kinds of mistakes. Huh, like I said, I was out of town for the greater part of the month, so I had to come in and just kind of vent all that out with you. I'm happy to be a part of the conversation. I don't hate anybody that I put into this broadcast tonight, but I think that I had some valid points that needed to be put out there, and I wanted some different perspectives to be put out there for the sake of different individuals. There's a lot of bad stuff going on, and we can do better. If you're in the local area and you want to come visit with the Church of Christ, we'd love to have you. 823 Starling Avenue, Sundays at 10:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. 276-806-3641, calebgrubbsen@gmail.com. Keep asking, what does the Bible say?